Hi, everybody. I'm Jack Hathaway. I'm the town administrator for the town of Norfolk. And I'm joined by Jim Lee here, a member of the Board of Selectmen. Sorry, I'm still waking up today. Hi, Jim, how are you?
Good, Jack. Glad to see you're awake.
We're here for our monthly Conversation Corner. Although it's been probably three months since we've done it.
Not that long, come on.
But it is timely. We are in the heat of the spring. We've had our election. I want to thank all the candidates who ran this spring. It's a great job. And we're now heading towards a town meeting. And so Jim and I wanted to spend some time with you folks and go through the warrant, which is being mailed out to every resident in town. It's also on the town website. If you go to virtualnorfolk.org, on the homepage, you'll see, under the news, right in the middle of the page, you'll see a link for the warrant and another link for the budget. So go do your research and hopefully everybody will have a lively discussion at town meeting and have some fun.
Let's not forget to make sure that people attend. Please, attend. We need people there. It's your town, your community. These decisions are yours to make. We just recommend and you decide. So hopefully we'll get a lot of folks there.
So May 13th at King Philip Middle School. I encourage you to attend, 7 o'clock. And we think we'll get through in one night. This is all, we never know. It could be two nights. But we do have a number of very important articles. And of course, in the spring, we always talk about the budget. So we hope you'll be there. So why don't we jump right in, Jim, and start talking about the warrant?
Okay. We have 37 articles on the warrant this year. There've been times when we've had over 100, I think, pretty close. I mean, this isn't a heavy lift, but there are really some important issues. Should we thought we'd just briefly go through them one at a time and give you a brief overview. Some, I think, we can just sort of pass by because they're boilerplate. They're just articles that allow us to do the business of the town that really don't have much significance. But there are some ones here that are pretty important. And probably we should go right, I would say, right to the budget.
Sure.
Start right there because that's early on. Article six, if I remember? Nope, Article five.
Article five.
I was two ahead. But this is always something that's important. Just quickly, in way of some of the background. The budget this year, as in past years, is balanced. We have carried forward a snow and ice deficit that we've managed to take care of. It wasn't exactly a light winter. I think we spent, what, over $500,000? I think over $500,000 on snow and ice removal and sanding and all the good things that go along with it. So it was a tough winter. But we have managed to make sure that that's taken care of and not carried over. In fact, we've never carried it over, I think, since you and I have been around.
Correct.
We've always managed to find the resources. But we have no major, major issues in the budget this year. Everything is pretty much straightforward. But Jack, why don't you just walk them through the departments briefly? And we'll have the detail at town meeting by department. And anyone that wants to talk about any one specific article, we're there to do it.
Again, it is on the website. And actually, you can go all the way back to fiscal year 2004 if you want to go back and do some research, see how things have changed. But, all right. So we are now at a $34.6 million budget, which is up 3.3% this year. You know, really, I'll let King Philip and the elementary school talk about their budgets, but they are both up about 4%, at least in our portion of that budget. As you know, King Philip, we share with Rentham and Plainville. And each town is a little bit different. But their overall budget, I believe, is up 5.2%. And our assessment is up 4%. The other towns, just because of the numbers, they're up higher this year. So...
Jack, just maybe one point on that. It used to be, I used to be on the King Philip School Committee. And back in those days, it was by the number of students. And you paid whatever share you had. If there were 10 students in the school, you had three, you paid for three. That's changed when Edward Forn came in and they became, they developed a very, what I, my view is a very convoluted formula. I don't know anyone that actually can interpret it. But that's had a significant impact on us for several years. And you might just share some of the disproportionate considerations associated with that formula.
Sure. I had a conversation...
We have no control over it. Just want to say that, but people should be aware of it.
Thank you, Jim. I had a conversation today with the King Philip School Committee, sorry, King Philip Superintendent, Dr. Zalinski, and the Rentham Town Administrator. Unfortunately, the Plainville Super Town Administrator wasn't able to attend. But we talked about, I kind of got on my soapboxes, I told Jim, and said, you know, I think the three towns really need to get together and look at this formula. As you said, we are now relying upon the state's formula where it kicks in minimum local contribution and looks at income, average income for the town, and looks at EQV or the valuation of the town.
It's a wealth factor. They call it a wealth factor.
It does take in...
Intriguing.
A wealth factor. But there seems to be something askew. And really, when you focus on it and you take our assessment divided by our students, and then you take Rentham's assessment and Rentham's students, you get a $1,200 difference. So we're paying $1,200 more per student than Rentham is. We're paying $2,000 more than Plainville is. Now, not, you know, I think the demographics of Norfolk and Plainville are clearly different. Rentham and Norfolk, though, I see a lot more similarities. You know, you look at the average value of homes, they're very comparable. You look at average incomes, they're very comparable. So there's something in that formula that's throwing this off. And even put that aside for a minute, you just think about the fairness. You know, in two suburban communities, which are very similar and have the similar challenges, to me, we should be paying on a per pupil basis and not having this convoluted formula that really creates an inequity. So, I mean, because it turns out that we're paying $1 million more than we really should be if you just divide it by the number of students.
And it has been that way for some time.
And so we did have a, we had a conversation. And this was somewhat inspired by a conversation at the Advisory Board. And, you know, we talked about it. And, you know, Norfolk would, I think there's, you know, certainly, everybody supports King Philip. We want to continue to support King Philip. But it's, at some point, Norfolk has to look out for itself and say, how do we fix this? And we've got to put some pressure on the other communities to come up with a better formula. So, just touch on that for a second. Thank you. Some of the other important things in the budget going on. We are in the, what I call, the municipal side. Obviously, it's the Norfolk budget, other than the elementary school. We are completing the hiring of a police officer. We hired a half-year police officer this year. So we're putting a full-year salary in the budget this year. Same thing with the town planner. We started that last year, and we've got a full year of the salary in for next year. Those are the two personnel changes that we have. There are some DPW additional groundskeeper, grounds person that we put in. We actually put that in last year, so we're funding that this year at the full level. But that actually came with some savings from contractual services. So it's not really a budget change, but it is a personnel change. So other than that, it's not a very dynamic budget. We really tried to maintain our services that we had from last year. And we were able to make, have some savings in our health insurance. So that, our health insurance is only going up 2%. Our premium is going up 7%, but we were able to realize some savings. We were able to transfer some money out of this year's budget into snow and ice to help cover that deficit. So we had a surplus this year, which will not exist next year.
Just, if I may, Jack, just to comment on the health insurance or the benefit side of our business, which is not really a controllable component of our budget. But it's become more controllable, if you will, within our budget. And a lot of that goes to Scott Bragdon. Scott is, who is our Human Resource Director, is the one responsible for going through all of our insurance coverages. And he has done yeoman's work. He has saved us substantial premiums, both on the liability side and on the healthcare side, that has, let's just say, more than carried the weight of the position.
Absolutely.
He's done a great job. Because it's something no one had the time to do. I think your staff in the selectmen's office is two people.
If you count me, it's two.
Yeah, I'm counting you. So Scott has been very helpful and done a great job with that.
Yep. I would agree 100%. So thank you. The other, I guess, the other kind of good news in the budget that, along with that same line of thought, is in our electricity costs. We've got the solar fields in place, which the town supported that last year. And that's in place. And it's now netting us about $230,000 to $250,000 a year in budget savings. So, you know, I would say, combination of the Energy Committee and really Bob Bullock for getting that deal together. Bob spent a good part of probably calendar year 2013 working on that deal and getting that done. And so that is an annual savings of $230,000 to $250,000 that we will enjoy for a very long time.
Yep.
There are, you know, the school, Dr. Allardy, who has been a great partner at the elementary school. She's the school superintendent, obviously. She has brought us a budget. We're probably about $60,000 lower than where she would like to be. She was trying to bring back some programs that have been lost over the last few years. So we're still, you know, we would like to get to her level, but realistically, we probably won't at this point because the resources just aren't there. But they still have a 4.2%, 4.25% increase. And I think she's very comfortable with that budget. And she'll talk about that at town meeting.
Yeah.
And once again, I can't speak highly enough of her partnership. Not only the work she does at the school, but the work she has done with the town.
Yeah, she's been terrific to deal with. And on the King Philip side, I would say that the superintendent there has also been good to work with on this this year. We have met with her several times on this budget. They have somewhat of an unfortunate process where they have to submit a budget early in the process, or in February, actually. And so they're way ahead of the curve. And as most of us who have involved in budgets, you never start low and go high. You know, you always start high and go low. So we always get terrified by their first draft because it's usually something that's just, you know, not reachable in anyone's best scenario. But she's been very good to work with this year. We've gotten it down to a number that I think she's comfortable with without making any dramatic changes to the system. A number that, you know, we'd always like less, but we can live with it. We can absorb it. We've got it in the budget. And so both schools have been very good to work with this year. Not that they haven't in the past, but, you know, every year is a new year. And they should advocate for everything that they need. That's their job. But we have to play Solomon and put this all together and come up with the right answer. And it's worked out well this year.
It's been nice having some stability.
Yeah, that it has.
I'm on my seventh, eighth, if you count King Philip Superintendent. So it's been great having some stability at the, both the superintendent and the principal.
Nice having a little bit of stability here in Norfolk, too.
It has been nice. You know, that's an interesting, just an aside. You know, I'm still kind of one of the junior senior managers in town. You know, Cole, I beat Cole by a couple of months, Chief Bushnell. But almost every other department head, besides Bob McGee and the DPW, I have less tenure than...
Well, Chuck's been here since the earth cooled.
Oh, yes.
And so on. But that's, you want that balance.
Oh, yeah.
And having people that have grown up in the system and care for the town and care for the community, you see it every day in the way they work.
No, I wouldn't trade it.
It's a nice blend.
Yep. So maybe we go back up to the top and just kind of quickly go through these.
Yep.
And so obviously, Article 1 is the election of the officers. That's done. Prior year on paid bills, we don't have any budget transfers. We will have some that the Advisory Board has, have gone over the majority of those. Snow and ice is the killer there. We're transferring $400,000,000 into the snow and ice budget to close that gap. We do have a project that we're accomplishing through the transfers, where we're taking some money, some debt proceeds, and transferring them to a project account where we're going to put in fiber that connects the buildings because we need to replace the old coax cable between the buildings. So some people may have questions about that at town meeting. But I can tell you that that's very productive. And actually, there will be a payback on some cost savings.
And transfers, just for folks at home, transfers, we're not asking you for more money.
No, we're moving money from one account to another.
Unlike the schools, which they have the ability to move money from any account they so choose. They vote only one number for the schools. In town government, we don't have the ability to do that. You have to, you approve each individual budget. And if we have to move it from one to another, we have to do it through a transfer process. So we're not asking for anything more. We're just realigning where we had some expenses and some savings.
We have our non-contractual compensation schedule. We're looking for a 1.5% cost of living adjustment onto that schedule. That's for about 15 management-level employees or assistant managers, mostly in town hall. We already talked about the operating budget. The water budget is, again, not very, not very exciting. It's up $32,000. It's a 1.5, almost $1.6 million budget. And, you know, Bob has presented this to the selectmen. They support it. There's no increase in the rates, the water rates. So I think, hopefully, we'll not be, we'll answer any questions you have. But it's a relatively painless budget for, as far as controversy.
Article 7, actually, is an article that's going to be IPed. It's one that we've covered another way and really won't be an issue for town meeting. Article 8 is an article around capital. We do have some resources available through prison mitigation and other sources. And we have, we have a larger need than we can fulfill. But we keep working at it and trying to stay on schedule so that we don't get too far behind. So we will be talking about a number of capital items, some police cruisers, some much-needed trucks for DPW, things of that nature. But I don't think anything that will be controversial. Hopefully, with a little bit of luck.
Article 10 is an interesting one. That's one that we haven't done, at least not in my tenure, in the past 11 years. We're asking for the town to support some, to issue us, for us to issue some debt so that we can get some road projects done. $280,000, if I'm not mistaken.
You are right.
Originally, we had planned for Park Street. But because Park Street was in such bad shape, the DPW was already taken, done that. And we're going to pay for that out of the Chapter 90 funding. But we have Main Street, Lake Street, and Bob is going to propose to...
Seconk, from Seconk to Oldsmill. Main Street, Lake, yeah, and Fruit.
Yep. And then he's going to do, add on some more of Main Street to replace the Park Street project. So really, the idea is there that we're trying to do some Main Streets that really eat up a big chunk of our Chapter 90 because that matches our Chapter, you know, our Chapter 90 will be somewhere between 280 and 360. And so we're trying to use the debt, this debt funding, to do some of the main roads in town that are enjoyed by everybody. And again, if we just do those, they eat up all of our Chapter 90 money. And then we'll take the Chapter 90 money and go do some of the interior roads, the neighborhood roads. And, you know, over the last few years, Bob has done a lot of work up in the Kingsbury Pond. He's done the Indian Roads, the Indian Named Roads up on Noon Hill. He's got, I know he's got the Bird Roads to do some work on. Tucker, he's got some work to do on. So there will be some, he's trying to use those, again, use those Chapter 90 money to do the interior roads.
And Diamond Street as well.
Yep.
We'll never keep everyone happy because we'll never have enough money to do all the road work that we need. But I do feel that Bob has done a great job of stretching the funds we do have to get more done. And he's doing it by sort of reclaiming the road as opposed to just patching the road. And I think most folks would agree that we're making a dent anyway, if nothing else. And for the old timers that remember the old override for the road, that is not what this is. We're not asking you to do anything on your tax bill. We are asking for project-specific authority to fund some very much-needed work. So this is not an override. This is not any additional, this is, we will pay for this within our operating budget.
And I should just point out that Bob is, this spring, possibly this summer, he's getting some more sidewalk put in on Main Street when you get out towards the Canterbury area. So he's trying to connect the Canterbury and Sweetland Farm neighborhoods into Main Street. So that'll be, that's been a long time coming. So it'll be nice to have that. I hate to see those people walking on Main, walking on Main Street and so we can get them up on the sidewalk.
It'd be, it's a shame we couldn't sort of resurrect the old sidewalk strategy that we had and fix these problems. But one step at a time. Article 11, we've got a couple of articles he nearly submitted by King Philip. And there's really not much to talk about. They're really just looking for authority to set up accounts. And quite honestly, at this point, I don't think we're terribly clear on exactly how they'll work this. But what was clear is that it's not going to cost us any money. So I guess that's what's important.
And then Article 12 is the, what I call, the committee reports. And we appoint some committees, or we create some committees that the selectmen will, in the future, appoint. I know there are going to be some presentations by the Historical Committee, the Affordable Housing Committee, as well as we have a developer coming in from New Jersey who is interested, who has purchase and sale agreement, actually, on the Southwood property, who will be coming to the Fall Town Meeting, potentially, to propose some zoning changes. So he's, we've allowed him, or moderator, I should say, is allowing him to make a presentation on, just kind of introduce himself to the community and very, very high level of what he's thinking. And he's starting the process, and we're very happy with this. He's starting the process. He wants to get some feedback from the, from the town before he really kind of puts pen to paper and finalizes what he's thinking.
Yeah, this has been, I think, well over a year in discussion and since he first approached us. It's a major project. Southwood is sort of out of sight, out of mind to most folks in Norfolk. Most, some people think it's part of Walpole, but it's not. But when you have a development of this size, it does impact our infrastructure to some degree. We have to understand the level that that might reach and what it means to our schools and infrastructure and water, which is something that's very much on our mind, relates to new development. But we thought it was important that we get as much information out early as we possibly could. And when he requested it, I think we all agree that it makes sense for him to at least get this on the table in front of as many people as he can. And we look for feedback, by the way, on this. So don't hesitate.
So that'll be, that'll be a fun topic.
And you're going to update folks on the regional...
Correct. Regional Communication Center, Rec.
On the Communication Center as well.
Regional Dispatch. Yeah, so I will do that at town meeting. And maybe in one of these upcoming shows, I'll do that here as well with some more detail. But, and that's a good reminder, too, that at this point, we're going to move Article 37 up to Article, in between Article 12 and Article 13. And at least we've, we've proposed that to the moderator. And he said that would be a great idea. And it'll be up to town meeting to decide whether or not you want to do that or not. But that's an article that asks for funding for, to purchase a piece of property and then to do some engineering and design and some site work for a site that we are going to use, that the town is going to own, and then rent a part of that building to the Regional Dispatch Center and use the remainder of the building, or at least a majority of the remainder of the building, for a police station.
Right. This is, we wanted to move this up because we, you know, you never know who's around at quarter of 11 at night. And this is an important article that we would like as many people involved in the discussion as we can. So we hope you'll support moving this up. If I can, just a couple of minutes. You know, for those of you that have been close to town government for a while, you know that we have a fairly urgent need regarding a police and fire facility. And we've been looking at this, I think the committee was formed back in 2008. So if my math is correct, we've been at this for about six years. We've had a number of proposals. The first proposal we got was to build a new facility was a little over $14 million. And there's no state reimbursement for this project. This is all on the back of the town. We knew that was too high, too much. And when REC came into play and it looked like the good work that you've done with your counterparts from the other towns and made this happen. You know, I mean, we're finally, regionalization is actually a reality to a certain degree in it. And you guys have done a great job in working this through. And the politicians got out of your way, which makes it even better. So that's probably why it was successful. So we rethought the project. We came up with a modified plan, smaller than we wanted, that one that we thought would work. And that was in the $10 million range.
Just under $10 million.
Yep. That went to a vote, lost by 15 votes, if I remember. But it was at the same time that we were proposing the new school. We have not come back for it, but the urgency continues. The urgency to fix something gets a little greater every year. You know, it's a burden. The preference has always been to keep these combined, to keep them, you know, as one facility because we thought there was some sharing opportunities, whether it be in training rooms, function rooms, things of that. So we didn't duplicate efforts. And one building's cheaper to heat than two. You know, there are a lot of reasons why. The reason wasn't motivated by needing to be centralized for police. It was for fire. Fire needs to be as centrally located as they can so they can reach all parts of the town. That's not true with the police department. Most of our offices are on the road, in the vehicles, 24/7. So the central location, and I think Chuck will speak quite well to this, isn't critical. We have not been able to find a financial solution to this that we think is financially viable for the town. Building costs from six years ago probably doubled, pretty close to. So that $14 million, or $10 million, if you prefer, is 18 to 20 million now. So, and that's just too much. The debt is in excess of what we think we can absorb, or I should ask you for. So when this opportunity came up with REC and then there was, it amounts to a vacant building, we talked with the chiefs, you did, well, several of us did. And they're quite comfortable with this as a potential solution. And it will greatly reduce the cost overall. And that's what we'll be asking you for, is the funds to purchase it so that we can house REC, which will generate revenue, as well as give us the facility, if you will, to construct a police station, which will require another discussion around finances. And we'll give an overview of that at town meeting. But it will be substantially less than anything that we've discovered to date. And I think, quite frankly, anything we could possibly come up with. If we don't do this, we're going to be faced with the decision of having to pour a lot of money into a very, a black hole in many regards. We have roof issues, we have ventilation issues, we have heating issues, we have doors. You probably noticed that we've been repairing them on several occasions because the trucks are bigger than when the building was built. And it's pretty tough to get them in there. So there are some significant needs there. So this is an important article, one I hope you will share our enthusiasm for because we haven't been able to find a solution that is as attractive as this is in a long time. So I hope you'll hear through the issues. I know one of the questions, I'm rattling on on this, but I think it's important. I think one of the questions that logically could come up is that what happens in the future? The town doesn't support, you know, the funding to build the station. Are we stuck with a building we can't use? And the answer to that is absolutely not. It is basically, right now, like a garage facility. And we have an urgent need at DPW as well. We have a number of trucks that can't be housed, that we need to house, that we need to get indoors. And we've talked about a building or extending the garage there now for years. We just don't have the funding to do it. So there are a number of alternative uses for this that will benefit the town, irrelevant of the direction. But our hope is, is that this works out for the police and fire.
Yeah. Thank you very much. You summed that up perfectly. I can't think of too much to add to that. It is an important article, and I hope people will support it. And town meeting has been very supportive in the past about the public safety building. I appreciate that. The next few articles, I guess 13 through 19 are all kind of what we call the boilerplate articles. So they're authorizing us to accept grants and sell tax titled land, articles that we have on every year that authorize the selectmen to take some action in the future. So that's, we need to touch on those. Number 20 is the energy, is the stretch code. And that is one that we've talked about at town meeting before. And it's been brought up again by the Energy Committee. There certainly will be a lively discussion about that. There are some folks that support it.
There are very defendable positions on both sides here. So it'll be a good discussion.
There are a number of communities that have adopted it, as there are a number of communities that have rejected it. So we can decide whether or not we want to go forward with that. Some CPC articles, just a few housekeeping ones, their operating budget, $35,000. Their allocation of the 10% buckets to the three different sleeves, the affordable housing, open space, and historical preservation. And then we have some proposals by them, money that would go to the Affordable Housing Trust, which we've actually, that's become fairly routine over the past few years. So it's, the CPC is basically, rightfully so, I think, So it's, the CPC is basically, rightfully so, I think, delegating their responsibility for affordable housing to our Affordable Housing Trust, which you're one of the trustees. And they have been very successful in creating opportunities in town. I think you're up.
Yeah, we have.
Seven or eight homes now.
Get close to double digits. Yeah. It's been, been a very worthwhile effort.
Some open space maps and creating a historic district that will be discussed by CPC. And then one article that was, it's unfortunate, it's come off the table now. But there was a proposal to buy the development rights at Jane and Paul's Farm and have that kind of, put a restriction on that property so it will in perpetuity stay a farm. And Jane and Paul and the family, I should say, has taken a step back and are thinking through that process. So we'll, we'll see if something comes up in the future on that. But where, the good news is, we're happy they're going to continue to farm it this summer.
It is good and bad news. You know, we, I think all of us are to some degree disappointed that we weren't able to sort of guarantee that what goes on there will stay as is and remain a working farm. But the good news is, is we understand it. And I haven't talked to them and I don't think many folks have and nor should they. It's their business. It's their land. But from what we understand, they, they want to kind of stay with it for a while. And, you know, I think it's a, it's an institution for most of us, best corn I've ever had. So. I'm glad they're going to still be there. There's a part of me that's disappointed that we weren't able to continue to work it through, but it's their decision.
And then, then we have five petitions for amending zoning bylaws. And those will be, I think that's the second, I guess the third, if you count the budget. That'll be the third area of the town meeting that will be really fairly lively. But it's a lot of discussion there.
And I think there's much more we can say to that. I think we'll leave that to the petitioners, but that should be an interesting discussion.
It will be. And I know Ray Goff, we have a new town planner. And Ray is, I encourage people, even if, you know, if you have any interest in doing some work on your property or now or in the future, I encourage you, or if you're just interested in land development in Norfolk or economic development in Norfolk, come to the planning board in town hall and reach out to Ray. He's a very easy to talk to gentleman. He's young. He's about my age.
We all have different definitions of young.
But Ray is very well educated in planning and land use development and I encourage you to come in and talk to him.
If you were my age, I'd say he's young.
He's.
At your age, he's a child.
He's, but, and Ray is working with the petitioners just to help present some information for purposes of clarity. And, and I know the planning board will have an opinion on those petitions. So we'll have some good discussion.
This is a position we've been advocating for, for some time. And we're thrilled with the, not only having the position, but having Ray in it. I mean, really, it's been three weeks, three and a half weeks, and the jury so far is just outstanding. I know he's been very creative in working through Hoboken and the Southwood project, sorry, and offering suggestions and different ways to approach this. And we've needed this type of input. It's one of the reasons we've deferred a lot of the zoning, which we should be doing anyway because it's really a Fall Town Meeting issue. But we don't want to rush through these things. We want to do our very best to get this as right as we can. And those of us that volunteer in these jobs, we're amateurs at this. Ray's a professional and has a lot of outside experience that none of us have within the community. So he's, he's been terrific so far. And I, we have great hope that he can help us sort through some of these issues. Because we have a lot of developments that are before the town right now. There's an awful lot going on. And, you know, from the Board of Selectmen's side, you know, the only real issue to us that we have management rights over, if you will, is water. Water is a concern. We have a capacity issue here with that. And so we watch it closely and be sure that that input is there, but we're not a land use board. So we're not a permitting board. We are a licensing board, but not a permitting board. But there is a lot of development, potential development that is in discussion around our community. And we need to think this through very carefully. New growth is a good thing. It's a positive thing. It's a good chunk of our budget, some $700,000, I think, this year. But it has to grow in a way that it's manageable within the community, both in terms of our infrastructure, schools and support systems, but from our perspective, our water system. We've got, I think, what, 842, 844 people that have water going in front of their front yard. I'm one of them, that are still on well, that have the right to connect. And if that whole group on a given day decided that was the day, we've got a capacity problem. And we're working hard on new well opportunities, new well resources, but they're long incoming and long in permitting. Somewhere between three and five years to get one permitted. And so we watch this carefully and make sure that the boards are aware of the issues. And because our bylaws now require all new construction to be on town water. So we've sort of, in some regard, put ourselves in this position. Something, by the way, we might want to think about. Because it is something we're, we're very concerned about. But anyway, sorry, but.
It's okay.
It's on the table. And Ray, we're thrilled to have Ray here and helping us think through these things.
Yeah, and I think just to wrap up the conversation about Ray and the planner position, I just think he, he's already, as you said, he's already showing success. And one of the things that I think he will be really good at is to helping us, you know, to be blunt, Norfolk has the reputation of starting with no. And we've been, you and I and other board members and on selectmen and the land use boards have been trying to change that for a long time. And we've made a lot of progress. And I think now Ray will help us really get over that last hump. And because he, one of the things that he's charged with and already is showing he's very good at is bridging that communication gap that may exist, whether it be between builders, engineers and, you know, the planning board and their consultants. And Ray is filling in that gap. And then I think, once we get rid of that communication problem, that will really help us highlight if there are other issues that we need to address. Kind of down deeper that.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it is process. And, you know, I had some folks say, well, we, we want to be cautious. We don't want to become easy.
No, absolutely not.
By removing the no, we're not suggesting that we want to make everything a yes. In fact, that's not the issue at all. It's really more process. We have a tendency to take what should be a fairly fair, straightforward, understandable process and complicate it. We drag it out. We make it difficult to work with us. And that has nothing to do with right or wrong. You know, that, we don't want to compromise our bylaws or our standards or our values. You know, that is not what's on the table. This, what Ray's helping us work through is that, you know, are there steps that we can take that simplify the process to get us to the same place?
Correct.
And that's, we're anxious to see the results of that. And I think all the boards agree that we want to do that. But, you know, we need someone to draw the blueprint for us.
Yeah. I think the planning board would enjoy knocking.
I think they would, too. Yeah.
So then I guess we're down to Article 32. And we have a couple, one, street acceptance. One is a, it's titled the street acceptance, but it's really accepting a couple of parcels of land that complete some street right of ways. We have a revolving fund that the advisory board actually recommended that we IP. And I think that is the right, right choice. Then we have a couple of, two more zoning articles that are related to the marijuana licensing and marijuana overlay districts. I think we're going to get to the point where we're going to recommend that those get IPed. Just because the timing is not quite right on lifting the moratorium. We'll do that in the fall. And then the second one, it's really a moving target on the state regulations and what the state is doing. So we'll, we'll address that one again in the fall.
And it doesn't put us at risk at this point. So.
And then that's it. And then we're back to Article 37, which was the building which we addressed earlier.
It's now Article 13.
It's Article 12B or whatever you want to call it. So it should be a great night. Again, I really hope, as you said earlier, I hope the more people we get at town meeting, the more diverse discussion we have and, you know, we can really go through these articles in detail. We're happy to answer as many questions. I'm happy to answer questions if you give me a call over the next few days before town meeting.
Yeah, or, or any of the selectmen. That if, hopefully we've generated some thought that if you have some issues or once you get the articles and you read through them and you see some things that you'd like to talk about before the meeting, feel free. We're all on the phone book and we welcome the call.
So I think we've gone.
Probably longer than they wanted us to.
Over our half an hour time limit. So thank you all for joining us. It's always a pleasure to do, do this with you, Mr. Leahy. And thank you very much for being here today. And I hope everybody has a great spring and I hope I see you at town meeting. Take care and have a.
Thanks, Jack.
Great day.